Three, two, one. Hi, everybody. Thank you for being here at tonight's interview workshop. We appreciate everybody taking the time to come out tonight. We're going to start with a roll call to establish form for the workshop, starting with John.
Here.
Christina?
Here.
Jen?
Here.
Nicole?
Here.
Joe?
Here.
And I am here as well. We have a form. We have a board. Nicole, has this workshop noticed?
It has.
And could you read our equity and question statement?
It's up to you. Our equity statement reads, "Each student has access to the resources and educational rigor they need at the right moment in their education, regardless of race, gender, ethnicity, ability, language, family background, or family income." And our results policies read, "Each student will acquire the knowledge and skills necessary to achieve their personal goals, thrive in a global society, and lead a healthy, self-fulfilling life."
Thank you. If we've had a chance to take a look at the agenda, is there a motion to adopt the agenda? I have a motion from Nicole and a second from John. All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Tonight's agenda has been adopted. With that, we are going to move right into our interview process. So, I want to welcome everybody here tonight. Thank you so much for being here. I have a couple quotes for you. So, "Every high achieving school board is focused on functioning in ways that improve student achievement. Research shows that the more effective the board, the better the school district students perform." That's from the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. This quote hits a little closer to home and has really come to serve as the guiding principle for our board. "The magic happens in the classrooms, and our job as leaders is to support the outcomes in the classroom." And that's from our superintendent, Dr. Clarity, and that's been something I think I've heard every single board member repeat and claim as their own at some point. So, we, something we all believe. So, "As a board, we've undertaken a significant amount of work over the past year and a half to restructure our processes and rewrite our policies in order to ensure that our work is as effective as possible for the benefit of our students. As we go through this appointment process, we as a board greatly respect and value diversity of thought among our members, and we want to ensure that a successful candidate understands the key work of a school board and the responsibilities of its individual members, and also shares our core operating values, so we can continue to focus our work on enhancing and improving student achievement in our district." So, with that said, tonight, I'm going to go through the process of how interviews will proceed. So, tonight, each candidate will have approximately 15 minutes to answer five questions from the board. Each candidate will be asked the same five questions, and I will have a timer, and I'm going to try and have it less glaring, as I've had in previous appointment processes. But we're always looking to find ways to try and improve this process. So, to ensure that each candidate is interviewing on an equal playing field, we're going to draw names to determine the order in which each candidate will interview, and then candidates will wait in the library until it's their turn to interview, so that everyone has the same amount of time to think through and formulate answers to our questions. While this is an open meeting, in the interest of fairness, we ask that each candidate refrain from viewing the interviews remotely. Won't be an issue, because I'm sure you want to listen to the same questions, you know, five times at this point. And after each candidate has completed their interview, they are welcome to stay in the room for the remaining interviews. At the end of all the interviews, the board will vote to select one candidate to be appointed to the vacant-at-large seat, and we will have the appointee take the oath of office still tonight. I'll go over the voting process in more detail at the conclusion of the interviews. Nicole, I'm going to shuffle these, and I'm going to have you draw names. And you can try to vote. Okay. Our first interviewee tonight is?
Corby White.
Okay.
Vikings fan.
Number two.
Binger.
Number three.
Rashni.
Rashni, can you say your last name?
Karoliwala.
Number four.
Juan Carlos Medina.
And then the suspense. Thank you very much. Okay. So, we will have each, each of the interviewees will get the questions when they come into the room. So, again, that will, I know there'll be some downtime in the library. I appreciate everybody's patience, but I think this will provide an opportunity for everybody to be, you know, operating on the same playing field. So, for interviewees two through five, could you please follow Tamara to the library? And when it's time, someone will come and bring the next interviewee into us. So, thank you. You can. We're fairly trustworthy, I think. And Corby, how about you come on up? And if you can just, give a quick second.
Meredith Theresa.
Yes, I think we are. Do you want us to get the door over there? Yes, and? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Welcome, Corby.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, same, hopefully.
Now, we're going to start the timer once Jen reads the first questions, because there's some more questions, so. Can you see it past my?
Yes.
Okay.
And Corby, questions that have parts to them, I'm going to read them all, and then you can kind of navigate the time as you like.
Thank you.
Okay. Jen, turn it over to you.
Question number one, "Highly effective school boards share key, several key characteristics. Importantly, they understand their job description, and they respect the division of responsibility between the board and the superintendent. When it comes to student achievement, our board, as, our job as a board is to set policy goals and to monitor the district's progress toward achieving those goals. The superintendent's job is to make the strategic decisions about how to achieve those goals. When it comes to running the district, the board is responsible for setting policy expectations for how the district operates, but the superintendent is responsible for the actual day-to-day operation of the district. The question for you is, keeping in mind the board's role, please tell us a little bit about yourself, including what new viewpoints and/or constituent voice you would bring to the board table, and what you would like to accomplish by serving on the school board."
Excellent. So, I'll get started. I'm Corby White. I am the Health Program Manager for the State of Wisconsin. And what I do is, I write all the policies governing the health plans and how they operate regarding state employees and local government employees. So, COVID enrollment just passed, so I was very busy during the month of October. Also, I am part of what we call our Equity and Inclusion Committee with the State of Wisconsin's Department of Employee Trust Funds. Recently, I wrote the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Plan for ETF, which that plan, that template, was used to write other state agencies' equity, Diversity Equity and Inclusion Plan. I'm also a board member of the Hundred Black Men of Madison, where what I do is, I'm responsible for the health and wellness portion of the Hundred Black Men of Madison. I ensure that throughout Dane County, our children, number one, the parents of those children have information about vaccinations, where to get vaccinated, how to get vaccinated, the statistics on what's going on with the vaccination situation, and also any other we call tripledemics, RSV, anything that can impact students, staff, parents. I'm responsible for disseminating that information. And not only the information, but making sure we set up clinics for testings and vaccination sites as well. What else do I do? Currently, I'm writing, helping the Hundred Black Men. We're writing a grant to receive funding from the Department of Health Services, so that we can set up clinics on our own, and I have vaccinators ready. I'm also the vice captain of the Hundred, of the Hundred Black Men Run Madison Chapter, where we promote health and wellness for our black men in the area. Those who don't know, we are the hardest to be hit with some pre-existing conditions. So, what we do is, we meet every Saturday morning, go for a six-and-a-half-mile run, which includes kids, also, high school preferably, and we network, provide them with resources that they can refer to that can help them out as well. I'm also on the Dane County Restorative Justice Program, which is the main reason I'm here today. I see these kids come through the Restorative Justice Program, not being able to read or write at a third grade level, and these kids are in high school. And right there, that made me say, what's going on here? Let's take a look. I'm talking to these kids, working with these kids, and a lot of them were just passed along the long way. And so, my voice, my reason, my being, for being here, my reason for being here, is to be that voice to bridge that gap, where with the Hundred Black Men, we do mentoring. That's our job. We have something called a Democracy Project, where we teach kids about how voting registration happens. What happened, what are you looking at when you see the polls? What happened last Tuesday? Helping them understand that, so they can be viable members of society and understand what, their voice matters. And then also with that, technology, of course, introducing kids to the options that are available to them to help them throughout their scholastic years, so to speak. Mentoring is huge, and also to bridge that gap between the school district and relatability, being that person that they see. You know, kids, I'm here in Verona quite a bit in the schools. My line brother, as I tell it, this young lady here, is Ibrahim Amara, and I see how he interacts with the students. I see how the students respond to him. They respond that way to him because he looks like them. And that's very important, because that distrust factor is there, unfortunately. And these kids want to be loved. They want to feel comfortable. Loving promotes that learning.
Thank you. Question two, "Another characteristic of highly effective school boards is that they and the superintendent share a clear vision focused on student achievement. Our mission states, 'Each student will acquire the knowledge and skills necessary to achieve their personal goals, thrive in a diverse global society, and lead a healthy, self-fulfilling life.' In VASD, equity is always at the center of our work towards student achievement. We believe that each student should have accesses, access to the resources and educational rigor they need at the right moment in their education, regardless of race, gender, ethnicity, ability, language, family background, or family income. The question for you is, please share what educational equity means to you, and provide any examples from your personal or professional life where you have taken steps to reduce bias and disrupt anyways."
Sure. So, I'll start with my own personal experience regarding educational inequity. I was part of Milwaukee's 220 busing program, where I was bused from the inner city of Milwaukee to a better school district, the Greendale School District, where I went to high school. And the program failed, because it was an exchange program. You had students being bused from the inner city of Milwaukee to the suburbs in exchange for students from the suburbs being bused to schools in Milwaukee. Why would that work? When the inner-city schools were underfunded, there was a staffing shortage every year. They didn't have the, the most up-to-date learning materials, so the program failed. But I managed to go all four years through that 220 program. And what I saw with my own eyes was that, as a student coming from Milwaukee to the suburbs, I was labeled. I felt like I was not part of that school system. I wasn't given the, the, I didn't have the access to the resources to be successful. The computer lab that was there, I had to use it while I was there. These kids had computers at home. So, a lot of the times, I found myself being at school until eight or nine o'clock at night to get a paper done, because that was my only computer. I went through that for all four years, managed to graduate and go to the University of Wisconsin Madison, but I will never, ever in my life, I'm tearing up, forget what I was told by my guidance counselor, when I left, was leaving Greendale to go to the University of Wisconsin Madison. He said that I would never make it through UW's curriculum. He was a white male, Mr. Robert Chernow was his name. When I graduated from the University of Wisconsin Madison, I took my bachelor's degree to his office and sat it on his desk and said, "Look." I will never forget that moment. That's what educational inequity means to me, not providing kids with the tools to be successful. And in this day and age, I think every high school should do, or every school district, I should say, should do what's called a cultural inclining survey, just to check the polls of the students, the staff, anybody who works for that district, to see, do they feel safe? Do they, you need to feel safe in order to learn. I did not feel safe when I went to high school. I remember that feeling. So, educational equity to me means having access to those resources emotionally, as well as the tangible resources such as computers, things of that nature, technology. And then, teaching the kids how to use it, because technology is only as good as the person being able to actually use it.
Thank you. Number three, "Our board's job description states that board members will represent, lead, and serve our community as a whole. We also recognize that, as individuals, we all have personal and/or professional connections to different groups and entities within our community. Few questions here. In your opinion, what are the differences between leading, representing, and serving our community as a board member? How would you approach a situation where you are asked to intervene in district operations on behalf of an individual or community group, keeping in mind the role of a board member? And how have you built and maintained productive and professional relationships in the past with individuals or entities with whom you have disagreed?"
This is a loaded question that I love, because being a member of the Hundred Black Men of Madison, this is what we deal with on a daily basis in every aspect of these questions. So, the differences between leading and representing to me, you can represent an organization without being a leader. And just because you, in my situation, you wear that Hundred Black Men badge on your left lapel, doesn't mean you're leading. You're, you can be simply participating. Leading means you put yourself out there, that, that you're visible, you're accessible, but not to the point where one can think that you can make the decision on your own. Make them understand that it is a board, that a vote needs to occur, and if you have an opinion that you want acknowledged or want the board to, to speak about or think about or vote on, approach the board. Don't approach me as an individual, and, and that's how we get through a lot of this, reminding the individual that it is a group decision. It's not just one person's decision. I actually had a situation where I had to intervene regarding the Hundred Black Men of Madison in particular, and that was where we were setting up vaccination sites on the south side of Madison. And what ended up happening was, one of the vaccinators, I won't name them, they were actually scared to set up in the community. And what I had to do, and Mr. Clarity, I'm sure knows him, one of our, the Hundred Black Men of Madison, is also the Lieutenant Chief of Police. So, in order to diffuse the situation and make them feel comfortable, we have police presence there. But we had to go back and forth to make them feel safe enough to come in the neighborhood to set up that vaccination site. And so, that was a good situation where I said, "Hey, I know someone who can help us. I work with them all the time. He happens to be the Lieutenant Chief of Police." Called him up. He sent some guys over. We set up the vaccination site, set up a testing site as well. We vaccinated 62 people in one hour. How did I do to maintain productive professional relationships with individuals or entities? I'm a member of several boards in the area, all of which are volunteer, of the Hundred Black Men of Madison. One of the other boards I'm a member of is the Dane County Organization Coalition. And what we do is, we ensure that everyone in the county at least has educational information to make the decision if they want to get vaccinated or not. We're not going to force it on you, but we want you to know, hey, here are the numbers. You decide what you want to do. I'm also a board member on the Dane County False Prevention Task Force, where our mission is to make sure that elderly are not falling at the alarming rate. Now, that may sound cliche to you, but falls by the elderly make up 75% of claims. They're driving up the health insurance premiums for all of us. So, I became a member of that board specifically to stop that. We can stop those falls from happening. And, yeah, yeah, I'm looking at the clock, so.
That is facing you. I'm trying to be specific. Number four, "Student achievement is at the heart of every policy decision we make, and there is a financial impact that goes along with those decisions. Ultimately, our budget should be a clear expression of our district's values. As board members, we also have a financial responsibility to our community to balance the district's needs with the tax burden on our district residents, many who don't have children in our district. So, the question for you is, in your opinion, what is our district's most pressing budgetary need right now, and why?
I think right now, budget-wise, I like to see the district focus again on technology and accessibility to it, because it's not an achievement gap. Everyone says achievement gap, achievement gap. It's not that. It's an opportunity gap. Kids need to have accessibility to be successful, and then along with that, they need to be taught how to use those instruments of learning.
Thank you. And the last question, what do you see as the major issues facing our school district at this time, and what role do you believe the board has in addressing those issues?
I believe two, and one of them I just mentioned. Again, that, that accessibility to technology and also the education of that technology to be able to use it. I also think, I hate to say it, it comes up everywhere, diversity, equity, and inclusion is huge. Students need to be able to understand, know, and celebrate their differences. That's going to increase and enhance learning in and of itself, when students recognize, hey, I'm different, we're different, but we're both here for a common goal. We're all trying to be successful students here at this district. I see students walking around in my neighborhood, and when they see me come outside, some of them are like, whoa, you know? And then when they get to know me, they're like, whoa. So, and I talk to them. I talk to them all the time. How's school going? When they walk by, I live on Poplar Way. For those who don't know, that's right off of Cross Country Road, on your way to Epic. So, I see the students going to Country View Elementary all the time, and then I see the, of course, students going to Verona Area High School. I know quite a few of them who play football. They always hit me up with the fundraisers. And so, I talk to them all the time. How's it going? What's going on? Are you thinking of college? I try to force that on all of them, because that's just me. And, yeah, yeah, that's, that's how I approach them.
Okay, you just hit time, like, dead on. That was very, very impressive, so.
I saw it blink at me.
At least it didn't do a. So, thank you. We did get through all of our questions tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate you coming and taking the time to talk with us tonight. Feel free to have a seat, and it could be a.
Stanley, go over your edge. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you are, yes, welcome to staying here.
I'm very boring here, whichever you prefer.
To the left.
To the left?
Yeah. I know you've seen this circle. I want this water.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
I just want you to know, the last time I interviewed before a VASD board, it was April of 2005.
What my face.
It was freezing in the room, and they, they grilled me for three hours, and was like, you get up to go to the restroom or have a drink.
Oh, we're all mad.
Not this.
And we'll start time once Jen finishes the first question.
Sure.
Okay.
And for any questions that have occurred to them, I'm just going to read the entire question, and then you can decide how you want to respond to it.
Sound good.
Okay. Question number one, "Highly effective school boards share several key characteristics. Importantly, they understand their job description, and they respect the division of responsibility between the board and the superintendent. When it comes to student achievement, our board, our job as a board is to set policy goals and to monitor the district's progress toward achieving those goals. The superintendent's job is to make the strategic decisions about how to achieve those goals. When it comes to running the district, the board is responsible for setting policy expectations for how the district operates, but the superintendent is responsible for the actual day-to-day operation of the district. The question for you is, keeping in mind the board's role, please tell us a little bit about yourself, including what new viewpoints and/or constituent voice you would bring to the board table, and what you would like to accomplish by serving on the school board."
Sure. Thank you. Well, a little bit about myself, some of you know me here. My former role was superintendent of this wonderful school district for 16 years, from 2005 to 2021. I'm happily retired now. Prior to that, I was superintendent at Marshall. I've also served the role of high school principal, middle school principal, junior high assistant principal back in the day. And I started my career, my 35-year career in high school, teaching physics in Iowa City, Iowa, West High School. So, I'm very proud of the, of the work that we did collectively as a board, and when I had the honor of serving as a superintendent, I've been proud of all the collaboration I've had with my colleagues and other leaders throughout my 35 years. So, I did have a chance to review the board job description, the code of ethics, or code of conduct, I guess is what it was, and I, I couldn't agree more with all of those things. And the board's job is to have fidelity to that, right? It only works insofar as that the players are on the same page and know what their role and responsibility is. I've certainly seen in my career as a superintendent, and I'm not talking about here, I'm talking about, I've also served as a mentor for other superintendents in the state of Wisconsin, state of Iowa. I've seen reports did not respect the roles and responsibilities that go along with being a board member or understanding the division of duties. So, that leads to unhealthy things, mostly for the kids that go into the school district. And so, I couldn't agree more with the code of conduct and the job description for the board member, and I understand it from a very personal level. I, I think it's probably fair to say that I've sat in more board meetings than all of you combined, so I've seen them go well, and I've seen them go not so well, including here from time to time, but mostly they went well. And I also had three years at the Marshall, two as superintendent, so I can speak to this. What new viewpoints? Well, I'm a parent also. I have a third grader in the TWEE program, and so I bring the parent hat first and foremost, and that will be my life story. And so, I bring that viewpoint. I bring the viewpoint of somebody who has not sat in your seat, but sat next to your seat for a number of years. I understand what it means to have constituents call, pressure, be outraged, threaten. So, I understand the, the upside and the downside to being in the roles that you are. You know, I wasn't. I was close enough to, to understand that. So, I bring that perspective of knowing that whatever decision the board makes collectively, you are guaranteed there will be some that will be very upset with you, and others that will be thrilled with you. And that's the nature of, of this position. Constituent voice, I. I, I think about this a lot, in that this is a nonpartisan position, and it should remain a nonpartisan position forever. Because then, the, the moment it starts to take on that air, is you have winners and losers. And so, I, I don't like to think of it, my constituent base is the children that attend here. That's my constituent base. And so, I volunteer in my son's classroom, and I'll do that tomorrow, and every time I walk in there and see those smiling third graders, I'm reminded of the work that I did in my 35 years, and that I should be appointed to this board, the work, why I do, why I would do that work. That's my constituent base. And then secondarily, is the staff, and some of which are represented back there this evening too. In my 16 years here, I had wonderful relationships with many staff members. We had hard times, and we had glorious times too. And so, looking back there, the leadership of Sarah and Barb, and we've had glorious times and hard times too, and I'm sure they would agree with that. So, I am here first for our students. I understand that the magic happens in the classroom. I couldn't agree with that more, and so we need to support our staff in support of our kids.
Thanks. Number two, "Another characteristic of highly effective school boards is that they and the superintendent share a clear vision focused on student achievement. Our mission states, 'Each student will acquire the knowledge and skills necessary to achieve their personal goals, thrive in a diverse global society, and lead a healthy, self- thrive in a diverse global society, and lead a healthy, self-fulfilling life. In VASD, equity is always at the center of our work towards student achievement. We believe that each student should have access to the resources and educational rigor they need at the right moment in their education, regardless of race, gender, ethnicity, ability, language, family background, or family income. The question for you is, please share what educational equity means to you, and provide any examples from your personal or professional life where you have taken steps to reduce bias and disrupt inequities.
Good answer, okay, so I have nine minutes and four seconds left. First of all, in response to the first two paragraphs, I would end that by saying amen to that. And examples, I'll give a few, and these are just a few, there are many. One of the measures we took that I'm particularly proud of was to engage a group out of the Seattle area called the People Opportunity Schools. Again, this is one example, and there are several throughout my career. Equal Opportunity Schools is an organization designed to disrupt the traditional look of who's sitting in AP classes. And when we took that on, I can't even remember what year that was, it's been a few years ago, with the intent of, we have the same statistics everybody else does. If you look at our AP classes, they were predominantly occupied by white, middle, upper-middle-class students. Very few students of color in there, hardly any students of low economic status. So we took that on, and Pam, him, and her team really hit the ground running with that, and really pushed hard against that, and got a lot of pushback, internally and externally. And so I've never regretted one moment engaging that group, supporting that group, supporting Pam and her staff to push that rock. Because it really opened up a lot of avenues for us to look deeper. It was early on in kind of our equity journey, if you will. But that's one example that I point to. And the last time when we did a strategic planning with Mary Furtakis, that, may I ring a bell? She's actually over in Germany, she went to the Seattle Seahawks game there. She's a big Seahawks fan. She would oftentimes cite that as a curb hug, because it benefited so many other kids. The enrollment in AP went up dramatically, and not just for the students of color. So that'd be one thing. And I've got six minutes left, and I'll leave that at that, but there's so many others that we engaged in, too. One thing I'll just mention is that the last time we did strategic planning, five years ago, there was an equity-based strategic plan. And it led to, actually, in 2014, there was the mission, every student must be successful. And so I see this mission statement as a logical extension of that. And the key word is each. Each student.
Thank you. Number three, our board's job description states that board members will represent, lead, and serve our community as a whole. We also recognize that as individuals, we all have personal and/or professional connections to different groups and entities within our community. The three questions are, in your opinion, what are the differences between leading, representing, and serving our community as a board member? How would you approach a situation where you are asked to intervene in district operations on behalf of an individual or community group, keeping in mind the role of a board member? And how have you built and maintained productive and professional relationships in the past with individuals or entities with whom you have disagreed?
Okay, so let me start with the little question first. So it's not the role of an individual board member to intervene on behalf of anybody. That doesn't mean you don't listen, but as an individual board member, you all know that you have the authority to do nothing. So the authority rests with the board. And so that doesn't mean you shut them down, you don't listen, but there are other avenues for taking concerns to the board. And at one time, we had a complaint procedure, and there probably exists something to that effect. But matters like that need to come before the whole board. So for me, that's an easier one. The first question I'm a little uncertain about were the differences between leading, representing, and serving. Okay, I don't know why I'm struggling with that one. As a board, as a single board member, you don't necessarily lead. The group does the consensus lead. As far as representing the community, again, it goes back to the previous question about constituents. I'm not representing constituents, I'm representing the children of the school district, staff of the school district. So it's a collective. And serving our communities, again, our community first and foremost should be the children that occupy our classrooms, staff that teach our children, and we have an obligation certainly to the parents and taxpayers. So I'm a little uncertain how to address that question, Jen, but if we have some time left over, I'd like to come back to that. And the third part is built and maintain productive. Well, certainly, in the role of superintendent, you don't agree with everybody, and not everybody agrees with you. So, and there are plenty of examples of that in my 16 years here and three years prior to that. And some of those relationships were strained, others were able to flourish once we got past those things. But here's what I did. Whether those relationships remain strained or whether they flourished, is I communicated with those people frequently and in person. And whether or not that meant we were going to be singing from the same page or not, at least we had an understanding of where we were at. And without going into more specific details, I have several that I could give details on.
Thank you. Turn your glasses back on. Okay. Number four, student achievement is at the heart of every policy decision we make, and there is a financial impact that goes along with those decisions. Ultimately, our budget should be a clear expression of our district's values. As board members, we also have a financial responsibility to our community to balance the district's needs with the tax burden on our district residents, many who don't have children in our district. Your question is, in your opinion, what is our district's most pressing budgetary need right now, and why?
Well, congratulations to the board, the administration on passing overwhelmingly the referendum. I think the big challenge facing the board and superintendent and this team is going to be budgetary discipline. What do I mean by that? So the voters just gave you a line of credit of $19 million, and it's going to be difficult to say no. Unless you're rooted, by you, the board, and the administration is rooted in the outcomes, the results for our students. So I think that's going to be a tremendous difficulty going forward for the next few years, anyway. Aligned with that, too, is advocating at the state level for a better funding system, so it's not so reliant on local property taxes, right? This is becoming a state of the haves and the have-nots. And way back when the Qualified Economic Offer came into, it was about trying to get away from those disparities. And now we're right back at it. So it's not just advocating locally, but statewide, too, because this has to be a look. There are all of our kids, there's a lot of mobility between school districts, and I think that's a very pressing issue, and it goes beyond just what this board can do.
So we're almost done with time. I'm going to let Jen, go ahead and ask the last question, and we'll give you an extra minute just to wrap it up.
Number five, what do you see as the major issues facing our school district at this time? And what role do you believe the board has in addressing those issues?
Sure, I think it is providing for the needs of all of our kids. We've all been in this lineup to know that our 21-year-olds have way different needs than our five-year-olds, and everything in between. And so it's a daunting task to think that, of the 5,800 kids in our school district, how are we going to meet all of our needs? And I'm encouraged by the mission statement, "Each," because it talks about each kid, and that's what we need to be about. And that's hard work.
Well, thank you so much. Great timing on that, too. So we appreciate you coming in and taking the time. You're welcome to stay in the room for the rest of the interviews, or you can head back to the library if you would prefer the peace and quiet. It is up to you. Could you leave, Jen, back to the library, just leave your questions here? And we'll, again, we appreciate you taking the time to come in today.
Okay. Thank you all for doing this.
Thank you.
And the work that you do, and good luck with your choice this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's free time. Okay, so we have Roshni, as permit.
Hello.
Hello. Hi, Roshni, can I have you sit right over there?
Oh, wow. That's amazing.
Yeah.
Thank you. Hello, everyone.
And Jen will be asking questions tonight, so...
We'll start your 15-minute timer after I read the full question all the way through, the first question. And any questions that have parts, I will read the entire question, and you can decide how you want to spend your time answering.
Okay.
Question number one, highly effective school boards share several key characteristics. Importantly, they understand their job description, and they respect the division of responsibility between the board and the superintendent. When it comes to student achievement, our board, our job as a board is to set policy goals and to monitor the district's progress toward achieving those goals. The superintendent's job is to make the strategic decisions about how to achieve those goals. When it comes to running the district, the board is responsible for setting policy expectations for how the district operates, but the superintendent is responsible for the actual day-to-day operation of the district. The question for you is, keeping in mind the board's role, please tell us a little about yourself, including what new viewpoints and/or constituent voice you would bring to the board table, and what you would like to accomplish by serving on the school board.
So a little bit about myself. Can you hear me well? Okay. So I'm originally from India. I did my schooling in India, and I graduated from the University of Bombay. And then I got to the US in 2005. And my mom is a teacher, she's been teaching for the past 40 years, so I know what she brings back home, the struggles that they have, the different thing that goes on in their mind, their perspective. So as a kid, I've always been exposed to that. Then I came to the United States, where things were very different from where I am. And I went to University of Wisconsin, Whitewater. I completed my bachelor's degree, majoring in accounting. And then I got on to becoming a financial advisor. Currently, I'm working at a bank, I'm a relationship banker, and I work for a community bank, because for me, community building was very important from the beginning. And somehow, with my mom being a teacher, I could relate to the two of them, how that both worked together for the students or for the children of that community to flourish. All right, so what will I bring to this position? I have two daughters who grow the school district. And I feel that every child in this school district deserves to have the platform where they have the, they are offered the skills, the ability, or at least the openness, a safe environment, you know, where they can be who they are, where they can have a self-fulfilling life, a happy life, you know? That is the whole and soul of it. I have not been a board member per se, I used to work for the Core College Charter School. I was in charge of the community building there as well. So, yeah, that's what I would like to contribute. Also, whatever you guys are doing, help you all excel in what you are doing. So that would be my goal. Is that, was that, did you have long questions for me?
Nope, that was the only one that came out of that long. Yes. And you have them in front of you, right?
Oh, I have them.
Yeah.
Oh, lovely.
Yeah. So you don't have to memorize my... Question number two, Leaden. Another characteristic of a highly effective school boards is that they and the superintendent share a clear vision focused on student achievement. Our mission states, each student will acquire the knowledge and skills necessary to achieve their personal goals, thrive in a diverse global society, and lead a healthy, self-fulfilling life. In VASD, equity is always at the center of our work towards student achievement. We believe that each student should have access to the resources and educational rigor they need at the right moment in their education, regardless of race, gender, ethnicity, ability, language, family background, or family income. Your question is, please share what educational equity means to you, and provide any examples from your personal or professional life where you have taken steps to reduce bias and disrupt inequities.
All right, so educational equity. Well, it's a very generic term, I would say. Education is not just an aspect of grades. Education equity is providing a platform for each and every student, no matter what their race is, you know, color, gender, nothing should matter. The platform should be provided for all the students. I have been in the United States for about 18 years now. In India, back home, educational equity for me was girl education. Unfortunately, we still are lagging behind in that, so I have been working towards that in a small way. We started, my uncle actually started providing education to, you know, like, we, there was a bread man and a milkman, so their daughters were not going to school. So that's how we started. So I've seen that from when I was very little, that how he encouraged that. And now we have about 215 girl students there. And you will not believe it, the challenge there is to bring them to school. If they're absent for a couple of days, we have, so when I go to India, which I do every year, we have to go to their houses and actually ask, we're like, why didn't she come to school? And they're like, you know, her mom was unreal, so she had to do all the chores. So education is not a priority, which I feel very sad about. So that for me is educational equity, where I know that we go to their homes to literally call them, but at least now they know that if they want education, there is something that provides them, that gives them that opportunity to learn, acquire the skills, so then they can lead a happy and a self-reliant life.
Thank you. Number three, our board's job description states that board members will represent, lead, and serve our community as a whole. We also recognize that as individuals, we all have personal and/or professional connections to different groups and entities within our community. And there's three questions here. In your opinion, what are the differences between leading, representing, and serving our community as a board member? How would you approach a situation where you are asked to intervene in district operations on behalf of an individual or community group, keeping in mind the role of a board member? How have you built and maintained productive and professional relationships in the past with individuals or entities with whom you have disagreed?
All right, so the first question, leaving, representing, and serving. Well, leading for me, to be a good leader, you have to think less of yourself, it's more about how you provide opportunities for others to grow. That makes a good leader. Representing for me is standing for what you believe in. Doesn't matter if you're the only one, you have to represent what you believe in. Serving our community as a board member, I would say more on the lines of, again, educational excellence, you know, safe, encouraging environment for the students. safe, encouraging environment for the students. I have a ninth grader. My heart goes out. There was an incident that happened. You know, like, such things should never happen. I know we all say they should never happen, but they still happen, which means that we, as a team, as a community, are lagging somewhere. We may be the best, but numbers don't lie. So, yeah, that, according to me, is serving our community as a board member. All right. The next question. Well, intervene in district operations. I really don't know what that means, sorry. Can you explain that to me? Or give me an example, please?
So perhaps I'm feeling like you are being pressured to make a decision that really doesn't fall with the board. So intervening in operations that would belong in superintendent decision lanes, not board decision lanes. How might you navigate that?
Well, I just won't do it. Well, everything doesn't have to be great. I just, you know, I stand by what I believe in. That's pretty much it. And the third question, how have people to me talked about professional operations in the past with whom you have disagreed? I think the people, professionally and personally, that have disagreed with me have taught me a lot of things. I'll be very honest. Open communication, you know, taking disagreements as a stepping stone, listening, just listening. That is the biggest key to it. And it just makes a person see new horizons. I think disagreements are good if they are taken in a positive way. There is nothing wrong with disagreements. If all of us agreed on the same thing every single time, it wouldn't work. So disagreements for me are good as long as they are constructive, they are productive, and there has to be mutual respect. So that's how I would navigate through this.
Number four. Student achievement is at the heart of every policy decision we make, and there is a financial impact that goes along with those decisions. Ultimately, our budget should be a clear expression of our district's values. As board members, we also have a financial responsibility to our community to balance the district's needs with the tax burden on our district residents, many who don't have children in our district. The question for you is, in your opinion, what is our district's most pressing budgetary need right now, and why?
I don't know the answer to this one.
Do you want to move on to number five?
Sure.
Okay. Number five. What do you see as the major issues facing our school district at this time? And what role do you believe the board has in addressing those issues?
Well, I feel the... One of the major issues that our school district is facing at this time is... I feel like we need to provide them with a secure environment, the students, where they look forward to not just coming to school, but also being okay with voicing their thoughts, being who they are. I know there are a lot of other things going on and maybe bigger issues, but this is the core. This is what... This is at the student level. This is basically what the community wants and what the students want. And that's our role, to connect the two. So... Just having these kids... I have a ninth grader, so I know when she comes home and talks to me about a lot of things that's going on in school. I feel like more... A more encouraging environment, or more, I would say, open environment. I feel like that's the biggest challenge that we have right now, because if our kids have that emotional intelligence, they will be able to navigate their emotions intelligently. And that will just lead to not just professional success, but personal successes, that's more very much important.
Well, thank you very much. You have a little bit of extra time. If there's anything else you want to share with us, or...
Well, I would like to know the answer for this question. What is the district's most pressing budgetary need right now?
I don't know that there is one right answer. I think it's truly, when we're looking at how do we express our budget in terms of our district's priorities, express our district's priorities in terms of our budget, where should we be putting our money? Where is the best use of our funds at this point to invest on our students?
You might get six different answers. So there's not one right answer.
And you might get six different answers from each of us individually.
Correct.
Depending on the day. Thank you so much for your time. We really appreciate you coming in today. You can feel free to stay in the room, or if you want to head back to the library and have some quiet, it's up to you. If you go back to the library, just leave your questions here. And thank you so very much. We appreciate it.
No, I have a situation.
Yep, absolutely. Oh, welcome. General reading questions tonight for you. We have 15 minutes on the timer, but I will start the timer until she's completed the first question. Is there a little bit lengthy in question? Anything else to add, Jen?
A few of the questions have some parts, and I'm just going to read them in their entirety, and then you can decide how you want to spend your time answering.
Okay. Are you just going to be asking one at a time before we move on to the next?
Yes. Yeah, except number three has parts, so that will be kind of all parts for you to spend time on. All right. Number one. Highly effective school boards share several key characteristics. Importantly, they understand their job description, and they respect the division of responsibility between the board and the superintendent. When it comes to student achievement, our job as a board is to set policy goals and to monitor the district's progress toward achieving those goals. The superintendent's job is to make the strategic decisions about how to achieve those goals. When it comes to running the district, the board is responsible for setting policy expectations for how the district operates, but the superintendent is responsible for the actual day-to-day operation of the district. The question for you is, keeping in mind the board's role, please tell us a little bit about yourself, including what new viewpoints and/or constituent voice you would bring to the board table and what you would like to accomplish by serving on the school board.
Okay. It's going to take a second to internalize. Yeah, so a little bit about myself. I'm a father of children, nine-year-old and seven. And we moved to Verona about seven years ago. It was a product of Verona Area School District. And we just wanted to be closer family, because when you're raising two kids, it means that all the help you can get. And we weren't sure going to settle here. However, once we did, I know for me it was really important to start getting involved, you know, in the children's lives, as we all do as parents. And so as a result, I started getting more involved with the school sports, the school events. And then we packed it. And, you know, I realized how difficult it was for them, but how hard it was for educators and family, their teachers, how hard it was for our neighbors and for teachers and for the kids, right? Especially, you know, six-year-old and eight-year-old, friend one virtually. And just read a lot about what was going on in the country and how the education system is suffering, how the schools are suffering, how teachers are suffering, and how a lot of children are falling behind. And I just said, hey, I don't want that to happen to our, to my kids. I don't want that to happen to us. And how can I get involved? And that's when I decided to, you know, really focus on getting involved with schools, first to the PTA and Glacier Edge. Recently, reaching out to the principal, wanting to agree on a couple of matters that put me in touch with a couple of administrators. I don't know if I can name names, but, you know, just to keep it general. And then was invited to join the parent advisory, which I started attending those meetings, which I thought was hugely gratifying. I was super impressed with how it was such an open door, or I can just show my interest as a parent to be concerned and be invited to share those interests and have an opportunity to bring things up that I was concerned about that not only affected my children, but others. And so with that, I just thought, okay, I have a limited amount of time. And, you know, a little bit further back, I'm going to kind of just go forward backward here. My mom's a social worker, and I've always had this desire to help and give back and give of myself, however I can. And that even shows up in my work. So I'm a financial coach. So I'm an educator, more focused on behavioral change, which means, you know, I'm going to help individuals make positive changes that are digestible to achieve, you know, changing their life, their desired outcome. And so I just thought to myself, okay, how can I make the biggest difference with education in my school's life? And that's how I kind of started reading and digging into, you know, more about this, our school, the district, and what the school board does. And I realized, you know, I started reading more, getting involved about the issues that were going on. And I decided to get more involved and, you know, dove into what was going on with the referendum and the struggles that were, obstacles we were trying to overcome. Decided to get involved in that respect and support it. I wrote an op-ed article supporting it. I reached out to some board members just to learn exactly, you know, what is it like? What are you guys working on? What is it like to serve on the board? To really determine, okay, where can I spend this limited time to try and make a difference? And that brought me back to here. That's why I'm sitting here today, is just I feel that, you know, the experiences that I had, the concerns that had come into focus, and how I realized it's impacting all children, that my time is best spent here to take part if I can, and help with my experience, with my perspective as a first-generation teeno and professional, have, you know, working time to contribute, that skillset, experiences to help the school become better and achieve their goals. So I don't know if I answered viewpoints and constituent voices that bring to the board table. I guess what I would say is, what I would like to accomplish is just bringing a different voice and perspective to the table that, you know, given my background and my natural personality, I'm a person that really loves to connect with people. I think it's really important to listen. And any issue or topic that comes up, whether having a drink, you know, at a bar or talking about something really serious, I really like to see and hear both sides. I think it's really important. I think it's important to work with the community. And I think that just that being a natural part of my personality is something that I can naturally bring to the board, just as that, as that person who likes to connect the dots and make sure that I'm reaching out to everyone and being a person that can be trusted and take all sides and not make a sense, so to speak, to be fair.
Okay, wanted to be sure. I don't want to come short. Number two. Another characteristic of highly effective school boards is that they and the superintendent share a clear vision focused on student achievement. Our mission states, each student will acquire the knowledge and skills necessary to achieve their personal goals, thrive in a diverse global society, and lead a healthy, self-fulfilling life. In VASD, equity is always at the center of our work towards student achievement. We believe that each student should have access to the resources and educational rigor they need at the right moment in their education, regardless of race, gender, ethnicity, ability, language, family background, or family income. Your question is, please share what educational equity means to you and provide any examples from your personal or professional life where you have taken steps to reduce bias and disrupt inequities.
So, I mean, I think educational equity just means meeting people where they are. So what I do is, if I'm a financial woman, we meet individuals where they are, because financial education is taught in schools, and a lot of people might not be taught in their families. They might be visual. They might, you know, not see things the same way. You do, you know, cultural beliefs, or it could be a language barrier, a lot of, a host of barriers. So I think it's all about meeting individuals where they are, students, and I think, most importantly, families, right? To have a successful student, you have to have a successful family. And so educational equity means that you're able to meet families and students where they are to give them the tools and resource and accessibility to all things that can help them progress and learn. Examples, I guess, from my personal and professional life? A lot. Where do I even start? I mean, I think most recently, I, you know, was, I attended a PTA event, and I just volunteered. It wasn't something we had to do as part of the PTA, but I decided to volunteer to really speak Spanish. And I know it's a lot of Spanish families come to these events, but they're relatively quiet or sitting in the corner, not really engaging. And so I got involved, and I made it clear that I... Hablo español! Vamos a estar! Habla, vamos! Let's interact. So I think that that was the time where I realized that the language barrier was preventing families that had an opinion, that wanted to talk, that wanted to connect to the greater community, from doing that. And when they saw somebody that was part of the PTA and was behind the table helping, that spoke their language, they realized a lot more families were coming out to speak. A lot more families were coming down and getting involved in our event. And you can see the, you know, smiles on their faces. And like, I don't want to say pride, but a little bit like, hey, you speak Spanish, that's cool, that's awesome. I'll feel more comfortable. So that was an example most recently where I think I realized that and decided, let's try this. Yeah, I mean, from professional life... I think it's, yeah, I mean, a lot of examples. So as a financial coach, you know, finances, there's statements, and there's a lot of shame. And knowing you're not knowing financial basics. And people share it differently. And so you have to really be a tune. You don't want to build a workshop, it's an audience. When it's a one-on-one, it's a little different, but there's definitely nuances where you're trying to create a space that's safe for those individuals that are too ashamed to share something and ask a question that they need answered, and then the individuals that, you know, have it in the bag, right? And kind of like hearing things that they already know. And so I think that in a professional setting, I try to create a space where those individuals have an opportunity to, you know, have a more intimate setting. If I sense that, that there are people that have something to say that are not speaking, then I make sure that automatically I'll create a more intimate setting as a follow-up to invite those people to talk to me. I just think that's just having an awareness of, you know... It's having an awareness of where individuals have differences and being able to try to accommodate those differences creating a environment where they can receive the resources they need in the sense of financial education, or in your sense, you know, tools that help the kids learn. And maybe this family, they wear it themselves, right? Because not every family is attuned or technologically savvy. Or maybe it's vocal in speaking to teachers and realizing, you know, what things I need or the things that you need.
Thank you. So number three has a few questions. I'll read them all.
And four minutes left?
Our board's job description states that board members will represent, lead, and serve our community as a whole. We also recognize that, as individuals, we all have personal and/or professional connections to different groups and entities within our community. First question. In your opinion, what are the differences between leading, representing, and serving our community as a board member? How would you approach a situation where you are asked to intervene in district operations on behalf of an individual or community group, keeping in mind the role of a board member? And how have you built and maintained productive and professional relationships in the past with individuals or entities with whom you have disagreed?
Okay, so the difference between leading, representing, and serving our community as a board member? I think leading is... I mean, I think they're very connected. I think leading is, I mean, I think they're very connected. I think leading happens here, when we're on, you know, meetings of order to set policies and make sure that, you know, these possible impact and outcomes that, well, the metrics that we're using, the right metrics and we're getting outcomes we desire. Representing means, you know, listening to the community so that you make sure that they're well represented in the policies we make. And serving our community as board members, making sure that if we represented them and listened properly, we implemented that need, then as a result, we serve. How would you process it, you're asked in a reading disruption? Okay, so I would just be really clear that these decisions happen collectively and we have to make sure that every matter is brought up and is able, is able to be brought up in a manner where all, where we get multiple opinions and all sides can be heard and so that the most fair decision can be made. And that because that's something that they want to, we want to ensure happens, I may self in that position to share my opinion or push a specific agenda. I'm one seventh of the equation. Have you built and maintained productive and professional relationships in the past in the vision of the community? Absolutely, yes. And I think the key there is just listening, right? And say, hey, I understand, tell me more about that. Make sure I truly understand where they're coming from. Because I think if you give an opportunity for someone to truly share their view, after a few minutes, their emotion will fall away and then you'll get the root of the message. And then oftentimes, the root of the message isn't much different than yours or others. And so if you have enough patience to get through the emotion and, right, and be able to truly listen, then I think that you, that's how you're able to connect the dots with people, different views, or at least connect the dots in a way where they're willing to listen, accept the other side because they understand where they're coming from. You know, just sitting it down as a parent that's concerned about your child and just sitting it down as a teacher concerned about the student's performance, whatever the issue is.
Thank you. Number four. Student achievement is at the heart of every policy decision we make and there is a financial impact that goes along with those decisions. Ultimately, our budget should be a clear expression of our district's values. As board members, we also have a financial responsibility to our community to balance the district's needs with the tax burden on our district residents, many who don't have children in our district. In your opinion, what is our district's most pressing budgetary need right now and why?
I think the most pressing that is making sure that we can retain the best teachers and pay them well and fairly. Because if you think about the most important, the most crucial work that's done in the world that really can dictate and influence the quality of life for the people, it's probably in health and education. And I think that we have to be able to back that up by supporting the best teachers, recruiting them, retaining them, making sure that you're, you know, caring for the future, whether it's us, whether it's someone that has no children, that still, you're gonna still have to worry about these children that grow up and become adults one day, create the community, living. Five.
Five. What do you see as the, I'll give you, Jen can read it, I'll give you an extra minute so you can wrap it all up.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry.
What do you see as the major issues facing our school district at this time and what role do you believe the board has in addressing those issues?
Whoa, major, I mean, I think that, I think we're at a time where a lot of people are ringing about and saying, I'm mad or two. Where I'm from, what I'm about, my culture matters and I'm tired of not being listened to and paid attention to. I think that's a very pressing issue and I think it's one that's not easily, easy to answer. I think that, and I'm just gonna give one for now because it took a lot of time to have, but I think the board, the role of the board is again, making sure that we're listening to all those varying views and trying to find a way to recognize those various people that are, that want to be recognized, whichever, depending on the topic, could be, you know, race, identity in some other way and make sure to be thoughtful about, and considerate about teaching those things to our children so that they know as they become adults, that they're able to show understanding and et cetera for all differences where they come from. So I think the board can just create thoughtful policies by listening to try to incorporate the proper curriculum that's age appropriate for children, so building the blocks to be able to get to that point when they're adults, as adults, right? In financial education, I don't teach, you know, modernical Foye theory to a five-year-old. I'm gonna teach delayed gratification because delayed gratification would teach you how to be a long-term investor, or delayed gratification would teach you how to study hard to achieve a goal or, you know, do a bunch of running training to run the marathon.
That hits you off time. I appreciate, thank you very much for your time tonight, for coming in and for talking with us, we really appreciate it. So you can either stay in the room for the final interview if you want, if you have time, you can head back to the library. If you go to the library, keep the questions in here and then you have one last interview.
I'll stay here.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here with us tonight.
Thank you.
To generally answer or asking all the questions, you have 15 minutes on the timer and I'll start the timer once Jen finishes reading the first question. So there's two pages of questions and again, you'll have them there so you can follow along. Okay. And one of the questions has some parts and I'm just gonna read it all and you can kind of decide how you want to spend your time. Question one. Highly effective school boards share several key characteristics. Importantly, they understand their job description and they respect the division of responsibility between the board and the superintendent. When it comes to student achievement, our job as a board is to set policy goals and to monitor the district's progress toward achieving those goals. The superintendent's job is to make the strategic decisions about how to achieve those goals. When it comes to running the district, the board is responsible for setting policy expectations for how the district operates, but the superintendent is responsible for the actual day-to-day operation of the district. The question for you. Keeping in mind the board's role, please tell us a little about yourself, including what new viewpoints and or constituent voice you would bring to the board table and what you would like to accomplish by serving on the school board.
Thank you. I, I just, my hands off to all you because I know it takes an awful lot of time, especially in this last year, so my appreciation to your efforts and your hard work. I'm Joelle on Pecan and just, you know, the board's role, I realize it's not, you're not, um, telling people what to do, especially the superintendent, but I know that we're his boss, or you're his boss, so in that regard. I've lived in Aurora for 35 years and I had three children go through the school district, I mean, this is all things I know, I've already written to your folks, but, and my three children went entire school district here and my son had an IEP for 18 years, so I know a lot about that and, you know, one of my daughters was valedictorian, so we really run the gamut with abilities and skills. And we were very happy with the school district and hats off to at least X number of years ago for this special ed excellence, so I only have crueles for that. What would I like to accomplish? Literacy is a huge piece for me and I know that the school district is trying to address that, but I know the scores have been going down and so that's a, that's a huge piece for me and I've been doing research on that and all. And like I said, I know it's just, I would want to definitely help and I'm retired and have five kids in the school district, I think I mentioned that, so my concern is just the community. I'm here to stay. I would promise definitely, if elected, to run, because I know that was one of the questions. And my life is real stable and I'm not looking for a job anywhere else, so I, I would commit, barring any catastrophe, to not resign, which I know that's, people's lives change, but that's been hard on you, the board, too, and a lot of time and energy. And another thing that, because of my son with disabilities, I got involved in a lot of different things and one of the most helpful things was going to workshops and conferences and learning so much about disability in schools. And I would want to donate my salary to parents or kids in that arena because I know how important it is to be an advocate for that because it's priceless to me. And my education, nursing, I got my BSNW and social work and my, my concentrations were disability and school social work. And I've worked in those areas, just have a little experience in schools.
Thank you.
Did I answer that?
You ready for number two?
Sure.
Just making sure, okay. Number two. Another characteristic of highly effective school boards is that they and the superintendent share a clear vision focused on student achievement. Our mission states, each student will acquire the knowledge and skills necessary to achieve their personal goals, thrive in a diverse global society, and lead a healthy, self-fulfilling life. In VASD, equity is always at the center of our work towards student achievement. We believe that each student should have access to the resources and educational rigor they need at the right moment in their education, regardless of race, gender, ethnicity, ability, language, family background, or family income. In your question, please share what educational equity means to you and provide any examples from your personal or professional life where you have taken steps to reduce bias and disrupt inequities.
Well, as a social worker in disability arena, that was my job and I took it seriously because just the philosophy of those who don't have the same resources, the inequities of, I focus on a disability because that's, that's my area of expertise. I always viewed my job as to share as much information and the resources to get myself out of a job because that was so helpful to me is that people, and I always, I never liked the word that I was going to empower anybody, that power resides within individuals and you help them see that within themselves. It's nothing that we give to anyone, it is innate and to build on that. And equity to me, I sent a quote to you by Carlton Jenkins, who was the superintendent of the Madison School Districts, and it just happened to be in the Sunday paper, I think it was the Sunday paper, a couple of weeks ago, anyway. If you want a real anti-racist district, you focus on early literacy and beyond because this influences the math, science, innovation, and everything, and that's been a resounding theme for me. So to me, equity is giving kids the skills, teaching them how to read and do math and and to be, to be able to be in the global society, we've got to be able to read and with the scores, fourth graders, you know, just, I went to the DPI website, anyway, and the people of students of color, particularly Hispanics and blacks, less than 10% in our school district are age appropriate, are not proficient. So to me, that is huge inequity and, you know, I'm not sure what, what everybody's doing about that, but that's something that I wanted, I would spend a tremendous amount of my own time and energy in helping however I could.
All right, don't worry, I'll read all the parts. Our board's job description states that board members will represent, lead, and serve our community as a whole. We also recognize that as individuals, we all have personal and or professional connections to different groups and entities within our community. Question one, in your opinion, what are the differences between leading, representing, and serving our community as a board member? Number two, how would you approach a situation where you are asked to intervene in district operations on behalf of an individual or community group, keeping in mind the role of a board member? And finally, how have you built and maintained productive and professional relationships in the past with individuals or entities with whom you have disagreed?
Okay, the first one. As a board member, I would certainly seek out information and people's opinions and things and then bring that back to the board or the superintendent. One of my goals is definitely, would be on the board because you'd have access, would be to meet with administration and really get, get to know folks, to actually talk with each of you individually, teacher leaders, even down to the lunch ladies, I'll call them, I don't know the correct terminology. Because everybody has insight and they really look at, as a team, you know, I've been on both professional and parent sides and that's just such the way to go. I mean, everyone brings their own expertise and to value each of those expertise and we've got community members with incredible expertise as well, but how I would do that is I would not, I would never represent the board as an individual. I know that that's, that's not cool, but if there was something that they wanted, then I would bring it to the appropriate person or, because I don't know a lot right now, obviously, I'm definitely willing to learn and have the time and, and energy to do so. Let's see if I... I've been part of multidisciplinary teams, both in my nursing as well as in my social work and working with folks. I don't know what the next questions are and maybe I'll hold off on some of the other things I was gonna say. Did I answer these? I think I did.
Okay, ready for four?
Sure.
All right. Student achievement is at the heart of every policy decision we make and there is a financial impact that goes along with those decisions. Ultimately, our budget should be a clear expression of our district's values. As board members, we also have a financial responsibility to our community to balance the district's needs with the tax burden on our district residents, many who don't have children in our district. In your opinion, what is our district's most pressing budgetary need right now and why?
Well, I think the passing of the referendum is gonna help a lot with it being recurring and having, having those extra funds. It is important, we know that teacher retention and getting more teachers, not only retaining the ones we have, but increasing the number we have as well as other qualified staff. Next thing, the mental health of students, I mean, as we know, we just had a suicide at the high school, which is very tragic and I don't know any of the details or anything, but it's a tragedy and how we can help all students to feel welcomed and part of a great, bigger community as well as into, you know, smaller communities. I think smaller communities make people feel a little comfortable in the, in the big part in the, and of course, this is my literacy. And I think, I'm a little excited, I know that all those dollars are now, a lot of them are going to increasing wages and everything, but I think it's an opportunity for us to really get on the ground floor with teacher training, you know, more whatever is needed, I don't know exactly, but for literacy hugely because to me, that is, that's our number one purpose as a school and how we support that, you know, with mental health and all the other pieces are important as well, ultimately. I mean, it's such a global, global need and what do the school, what can we focus on and prioritize, prioritize, because we look, do it all, but we just can't, so. We've heard that in the process of prioritizing.
So number five, what do you see as the major issues facing our school district at this time and what role do you believe the board has in addressing those issues?
Well, it sounds like based on, you know, beginning, that I'm not sure how, how much the board, you know, the superintendent and the teachers are the ones doing that work and they kind of bring you, bring the board, what's going on and scores and all of that. And I would think that asking good questions and of course, supporting how we can, but it's like I think of Thomas Edison's quote, you know, what is it, quote, "I haven't failed, I've just had 10,000 things that haven't worked," something like that. So if we, if we have things that aren't working, let's not be afraid to, you know... So if we, if we have things that aren't working, let's not be afraid to, you know, evaluate, if you know, evaluation. I think that's a lot on the board's part of evaluating, but the input from leaders and stakeholders are critical to be able to, be able to evaluate, I think.
Thank you so much.
Were there two minutes?
Yeah. Is there any last thing you want to say?
One of the things that I did want to clear up, and I know that came up in the last board, I just want to make clear, as far as the, me wanting someone fired because of their sexual orientation is absolutely false. I never wanted it, never asked for it, never contacted anyone about it. And that's one of the things that I think is so important, is that when, open communication has got to be critical. And if we have an issue with someone, that you actually speak to them and not assume what you read in the paper, or maybe even what you've heard from someone who thinks they know what's going on. And that goes for kids, teachers, staff, board members, everyone. That's just so critical, and that's so me. I have a question, I'm going to come to you, I'm not going to talk behind your back about it. So, and I think that's, communication is of the utmost importance.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you coming in tonight and taking time to meet with us. This time, I think we'll be able to bring a corgi back in. And so that concludes our interviews for the night. So I want to, when Mr. White comes in, I'll kind of give an overview of what our next steps are. And we'll have a quick intermission, and then...
And maybe, and you...
You can say, they're just going to, I want to make sure everybody's here so that you can hear what the process for our voting is and how we move forward. So first, I want to thank everybody for coming in tonight. I'm looking at the board right now, and literally, everybody on this board has been through the appointment process. Is that crazy? And so some of us were appointed the first time, and they have had to run after that. Some of us were not appointed and have had to run. But every single member has been sitting in your seat. And we are, our hearts are with you, we understand, and this is a very challenging thing to do. And the things that you've shared tonight have been incredibly interesting, personal to you, and that have been just really, we appreciate you welcoming us into a snapshot of your life. And so thank you for that. And again, not everybody here has been appointed at their first time out. So we would encourage anyone interested, if they're not appointed tonight, to continue to run. Because I'm sitting with a group of extraordinary individuals, and I know that we would be honored to have any one of you join us. Because this is truly work that I think we all feel very privileged to do on behalf of an amazing district in partnership with a fantastic superintendent for our wonderful students. So I just really want to send my heartfelt thank you for your time tonight. So, that said, our next process will be for the board to vote. And this is always the hardest part, because I think, you know, we were just like, let's just expand the board. I think that's probably our easiest way. And so I want you all to hear what our process is, so you understand what we're going through. So at this point, the board will use our consensus matrix. I'll pass that out as soon as I'm done talking. And we will separately, without conversation with each other, we're going to have just our own ranking. Please note, the candidates at the top of the consensus matrix that I hand out are going to be in alphabetical order, not in order of interview. So keep that in mind as you're going through, just make sure that you're correlating numbers to names. Any discussion that we have about candidates can take place at the board table, but I think we're going to have our first round of just independent rankings. When board members are finished with the ranking and score tallying, please make sure that the total points allocated in the score column of your matrix equals 10. If the score is different than 10, review and recalculate.
Calculators are okay.
You can use fingers, this is easy, it's 10. Okay, when your ballot is complete, please bring it up to me and Jen, so we can then calculate the total score, we can do the final tally. The candidate with the top score, after all board member ballots are collected and tallied, will be announced publicly, and we'll go over a tie breaking process only if it's needed. Please make sure that your name is on your ballot. The paper ballots are only to help keep our process organized. Ballots are not secret ballots, but we will only be announcing the top vote getter. If there's any information, the final tally sheet will have available with Tamara. Once the top vote getter is announced, the board will need to make a motion and a second to appoint the top vote getter to the vacant seat. And then we will then vote to approve the actual appointment. So, are there any questions from the board about our next steps?
Do I get to swear to person then?
So with that said, I get, I'm going to ask that we maybe mute our live feed, just so they're not listening to me try and count like out loud. And I'm going to also ask again our board members, even, abstain from conversation while voting, but then also even after. This is a perfect time, we'll take a 10-minute kind of intermission while we go through.